Thank you very much for coming back to see round two of tonight's council meeting. And we had our recess, we have no delegations here coming to council in the evening edition. I'm looking really deeply, but I still can't see anybody, so we'll move on to the public hearings. We have no public hearings at this point for today. So we're just gonna ask if we can start off with the council member reports. It's been a busy six weeks. And councillor Thiessen, if you wanna start.
For sure, thank you very much councillor Tool. I'll do my best to be brief. I did have two out of three meetings with the Grand Spirit Foundation from May 22nd was the first one, and then the last one that I attended was this past Friday. There was one in between on May 30th. The May 22nd meeting was dealing with our strategic plan over the next five years, as well as our business plan over the next five years as well, which was held on May 30th, but unfortunately I was away. Well, fortunately, unfortunately. The, the meeting on this past Friday was just to ratify all the hard work that had gone in from the members of the board for a strategic plan, as well as for our business plan. And that was all approved as it was, and we closed down our, our meetings until September. And I'll look forward to giving your reports again when we get up and running with the Grand Spirit Foundation. The other, other meetings that I attended, the Mighty Peace Watershed Alliance had their annual general meeting way back now on May 24th, where we elected a new board, members who were appointed. As you know, it's a consensus board, and we have many different stakeholders from across the watershed. But it was a good, good meeting, presentations, and it ended a little bit later than everyone thought it should, but at least we had a lot of great discussion around what we can do to improve a lot of the watershed. Finally, Peace Library Systems had their, their last meeting, I guess of the spring, because we're gonna meet again in the summer. Essentially, though, we just reviewed the audited financial statements for 2018 and approved them, received our 2018 annual report, and a plan of service as well for the upcoming year, as well as we set out on advocacy to get super net bandwidth in libraries in rural regions, to ensure that they have the access to the internet that, that everybody has, and then it's up to speed and as fast as possible. And that is, oh wait, updated five-year capital plan too was discussed and approved as well during that meeting, so that's my report, thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Blackburn, I'm not sure if you were able to go to any council member reports, or... I'm gonna give you the opportunity to say so.
Thank you. I, I actually, as you might imagine, have not been to any committee meetings, or any of my external committees, and I thank you to, to those that are replacing me in those spots for the time being. I'd just like to take the opportunity at this point, though, to make it clear that although I'm here today, and, and very grateful to be here, I'm still going to be in a situation where I'll continue my leave of absence for another several months. It's good to be home in Grand Prairie at a time when my, my treatment allows me to, to get what I need here at the cancer clinic in Grand Prairie here. But I will be returning to Edmonton at some point, and eventually moving on to Calgary, where I hope to spend three months getting the, the final treatment that I need to get past this, this leukemia. So my time here is, is limited, and I appreciate the opportunity to participate while I'm here.
Well, there's a seat with your name on it, so you're welcome anytime.
Thank you.
Councillor Plott?
Thanks, yeah, I had one external with the Downtown Association, we had a board of directors meetings. Couple things were discussed, it was, we're gonna be, as you know, we're rebranding as the city center, so there will be a new website, I'm not sure if it's open and launched yet, but 910 graciously worked with Downtown and, and put together a very nice website, very professional website, so I'm excited about that getting launched for Downtown, so looking forward to that. There was lots of discussion around the St. Lawrence Center and homelessness in Downtown. It's, you know, the board of, the board's starting to realize that, you know, it's, when you live in the core, you're gonna, you're gonna live with those issues, but there was a lot of good conversation about how we could get involved and how we could be engaged. And I really wanna thank Wendy Bosch for her work with that and approaching Rowdery, and hopefully finding a solution for St. Lawrence Center, so I know she's been a big driver on that, so I wanna throw a shout out to her. And business licensing was discussed, and just wondering, you know, when it's gonna happen, and I think when it does, it, you know, Downtown Association would like to be part of it as well, they've got some, some questions they're curious they'd like to have in the process, but they're, they're excited about the process and think it's gonna be a good one. And on August 15th, there'll be a ribbon cutting for Cree Inc., so that would be an event that, you know, some people could mark in their calendars, probably more details coming out as well, so thanks.
Thank you very much. Councillor Friesen?
Thank you Deputy Mayor O'Toole. I'm, I'd like to take this opportunity to just update a little bit, or reassure and clarify residents on what's happening with Disabled Transportation Association. I have had a number of phone calls and emails of concern. The last communication, the last official communication was that the city and DTS were meeting to work out the, the future plans for the organization and for the service. Council certainly indicated at our last council meeting, and, and heard a number of concerns from riders who are worried about what may happen to services, and we indicated our support in the continuing of that. However, a motion came out, and this is what I want to clarify for residents, the motion came out that we would meet together with, with staff, with the DTS, but that we would only continue funding until a certain period of time. When we met with DTS, we issued a press release jointly, and we will continue to issue joint press releases when decisions are made, and when there are actual tangible updates for residents. But at that time, we had committed to continuing funding until August. So this worried a lot of residents, because they don't know what will, ridership of the, of the service, because they don't know what will happen after that. The only reason why council said until, at this point now, August, is because we will continue to fund DTS fully for the services that they are expected to do at this point, which is unchanged from before. We will continue to fund that fully unless and until something else takes its place. So as long as DTS is our best solution, we will continue to fund. However, we're working together to find perhaps a different operational model, that sort of thing, at which point, when we have something to switch to, then we will cease funding. But at this point, you'll see particular dates come forward. It was, I think we said until the end of June in our council meeting, and then when we met with DTS, the press release said until August. So particular dates will be mentioned, but that does not mean that at that date, suddenly council will pull all funding, it just means that that's the next check-in point, at which point we will continue funding everything that DTS is doing, and the expectation is that services will be continued unless and until there is something else to move to. So that was a little long-winded, but thank you for allowing me to make that clarification.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to councillor Minhaz.
No, it's what you, your, your committee reports, if you don't have any reports, and how about councillor Bressi? Great, I've got two I'll bring forward. One is GPREP, the Grand Prairie Regional Emergency Management Committee had another, had a meeting, and we've already heard through our other committee updates, some of the situations go on with the wildlife wildfire evacuees, I won't rehash that information, but to say I'm very proud of what our staff and our community accomplished, not just GPREP, but also the Friendship Center, RCMP, GPRC, we're all very instrumental taking care of those people. A couple things worth highlighting from the GPREP meeting that hasn't been mentioned yet, is actually only one, but just a reminder to council, if you have been following changes to the Municipal Government Act, by January 2021, there's requirements for all of us to receive training in what the elected officials' roles are in the state of disaster or an emergency. And so we've got a year to do it, A, the opportunities will be coming forward to us, but what I've been told is the online training opportunities will probably be very brutal and very long, so you might be very well advised to make going to the in-person ones that will be offered locally a priority. So that's one. The other one I'll update on is councillors Clayton, Plott, and I were at the Regional Recreation Committee, and a few things came out of there. Mostly discussion was the committee struggling to figure out what's, how do we decide if a recreation facility is a regional asset or not? And we had one method proposed to us that was kind of split the committee on whether it was good or not, I don't think anybody was entirely happy with it, and so we've asked the staff to go back and come forward with a different decision-making model, that I hope I've got good things, one of us has good things to report after the next recreation committee, hopefully we can get some progress on defining that, but it's been a struggle. The other thing that I'll point out is Pickleball came to ask city council for funding for outdoor courts, and that was something that we decided not to fund during the last budget cycle, and one of the reasons for that was we wanted to make sure it had some wholesome conversation at the Regional Recreation Committee before we went forward. Well, the decision at the Regional Recreation Committee was that that committee isn't gonna consider, consider Pickleball as a regional asset, and so there'll be no funding coming from that source. So that kind of serves the ball over the net back into our court to figure out what we wanna, what we wanna do with that. So that won't be considered as a regional asset at this point, it's up to the city to decide do we wanna move forward or not.
Thank you very much. Did you wanna continue, seeing you got your mic all warmed up and turned on, to talk about the roundtable?
I would love to, and I think the thing I'll highlight was, I went down to Calgary for a social media conference, and it was a few days with a few government folk, mostly nonprofit and for-profit industries were represented there. It was really interesting, and I think a few of the highlights for me was getting to chat with Facebook Bigwig about what's the impact of Facebook and some of the changes they're gonna make on elections coming up, and how do they see, what are some of the threats and opportunities they see in our democratic process? It's a just conversation. The most interesting part, though, was that at the end, he asked to connect with me over LinkedIn instead of Facebook, I thought that was funny. Other highlights was, I went to a presentation by one of the largest cannabis retailers in Western Canada, and the odd presentation was about how they're marketing their products. And it was really interesting, because my biggest concern with legalization is how does it impact normalization of use with youth? And so it was really comforting to hear about some of the restrictions that our provincial governments put on these retailers as they try to market. It was even more comforting to hear about how restrictive Facebook and Instagram and Twitter and all these American-based companies are towards cannabis legalization, and the challenges they've had at marketing, and you could, you can see a visible frustration from those marketers in cannabis marketing, and in my books, I don't know if that's a bad thing from my perspective. The two other, the two other things that I found interesting was, I went to one workshop on using brands as advocacy, and it was from a for-profit company perspective, talking about in the marketplace, should brands be advocates for social issues, should they not? And it was really interesting for me in terms of using examples and talking about how if brands don't advocate for themselves, then in this climate, then advocacy positions get assumed or pushed onto them from the grassroots, and they were kind of making the point of, from a private company perspective, if, if you don't stand for something, then you'll be told that you stand for, then people will perceive that you stand for other things. And it really, it really got me thinking about, when we talk advocacy, we never talk about advocacy in terms of social media, our online presence, and how we help our citizens know what we're advocating for, and also be equipped to advocate for municipal and regional interests. We talk about how are we talking to, to provincial and senior levels of government? We're never talking about that conversation we're having as a community. I think the last thing that was really interesting for me was, I heard from, I heard at workshops, one run by a government person who was working for the province, one run by somebody who was working for, for a private company that's worth hundreds of millions of dollars, and another one working from a very large nonprofit, and all of them talked about the role of their boards and their social media policies, and how they're engaging in social media, and all those people seem to think that there's an important governance role when it comes to social media, obviously not getting down in the weeds, but deciding what's our brand look like, and I think that's something we've never had a conversation with in a governance perspective, and I think when the majority of our population is under 34 and has grown up with social media, it so affects people's experience with municipal government, and that's something that I've been so thankful to see our staff putting more effort and doing a very good job with, but from a governance role, I'm wondering if there's some conversations we have, add there.
Well, thank you very much, I didn't know that you had an interest in social media before, so this was great, and I'm glad you got a lot out of that conference in Calgary, so we'll move on to councillor Minhaz.
Thank you Mayor Kavanaugh O'Toole, this time I pronounced you right, not your brother, but that's okay. And this is the longest, I probably forget a lot of stuff we went, but got some list. First, we went to the water, ribbon-cutting water in Bemley, that was very good kind of celebration there. There was our MP and Prime Minister that were there, and also my colleague Kavanaugh O'Toole. And then we went to Canadian Citizenship was on 13, I think, I went, two of them, and that was interesting thing, there are lots of people getting, sorry, not immigration, citizenship, it was 454 people, I think, and there were four times they did that during the two days. And then we went to Pride Breakfast on 14th morning, then AUPE celebration, we went there too, and then, and then 14 to 17, went to the North, 55 North, with the colleague Wade and Yaki. It was good learning there, you know, there was lots of economic factors, they're telling us the economy and plus the internet and all the, lots of things they mentioned, and to the oil side and all this stuff. It was good learning experience to know which direction we're going and where the problems are coming along with the technology-wise. So then also went to, where are they, Accra Annual Shareholder Meeting, it was in their office, I think it was noon till 1:30. And also went to the Menza Ford opening, and also Chamber Commerce, what do they call that, Make sure, went there. And then, then Canada Day Parade, went to the city, also I was supposed to go with the Key 20s, but I ended up with our Gursik Machinery Society from Siquey, Mindy. So I served a lot of water and use during that time, it was fun, I got, got a blessing, you know, like it was cold in the morning and raining, but when the parade started, it was really turned out to be nice weather. And then Kavanaugh O'Toole speak for the city behalf on that Miss Coopie Park, and that was a great day for me to spend the time with all the peoples, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Minhaz, councillor Eunice Friesen?
Thank you. So yeah, this goes back to June 7, 6, I guess. I would like to highlight citizenship ceremonies, it was the first time that I had actually even attended one, and I laughed, I cried, I shook so many hands and hugged many brand-new fellow Canadians who have been here for years and worked so hard to become Canadian citizens. I just think that every born Canadian ought to, at some point in time, attend a citizenship ceremony and, and really understand how fortunate we are to have been born here, rather than to have had to work as hard as they have to achieve citizenship. So that was pretty exciting. And then Pride, very near and dear to my heart, I really enjoyed Pride Festival at East Link Centre, and of course, the Party in White, where I was able to give greetings on behalf of the city. My fellow councillor Chris Thiessen was there, and we did have a wonderful time. And I was really sorry then to, not to go on holidays, but to miss National Indigenous Peoples' Day here in Grand Prairie, because that's something I really enjoy. But because we went north on holidays, I actually attended and took part in the festivities for National Indigenous Peoples' Day in Inuvic and Tak Tiyak Tak, so I gotta tell you how fun that was. In the Yukon and in the Northwest Territories, it's actually a holiday, and I, I just think it's so fantastic, the festivities all take place actually on the 21st, which I think happened to be a Saturday this year, I was on holidays, it didn't matter. But in, you know, often it gets kind of cast aside here in Grand Prairie, because in Alberta it's not, it's not a provincial holiday. So that was pretty exciting to see the whole community out and really enjoying that. Thank you very much, that's it for me.
Thank you very much. Councillor Platt?
Thanks Deputy Mayor O'Toole. I guess the, it was a busy last few weeks for all of us probably, and the one highlight that I had was the 55 North Conference that was attended with councillor Minhaz, he spoke a little bit, and councillor Clayton, as well as Rebecca Lee for her Economic Development. Some of the key takeaways from that were the, the big words that seemed to be thrown out there were adapt, collaborate, and ingenuity. I think the, you know, it's 200 C-suite executives from around the province, and a lot of it was just about trying to get, is this the new norm? And a lot of business owners, a lot of conversations, it was good and bad, but just a lot of business owners talking about how the new norm of Alberta is not what it once was, and not a lot of optimism that I was hoping to see, but Todd Hirsch did a presentation from ATB and forecasted a 0.8% GDP growth, and you know, everybody kind of went quiet, because I think everybody in the room was hoping for some good news, and just, you know, Alberta's begging for some good news right now. The sad takeaway I had in talking to majority of the room there was just sadly how many business owners are divesting from Alberta, and it was really disheartening to hear in that size of a room with the, with the kind of net worth of some of these people, their biggest business goals were to divest out of Alberta, and, and it just scares me when I hear that kind of stuff, and it scares me for a region, because some of those people were from the region, and some of them were for management of facilities in this region, just talking about how they're just not convinced that Alberta's gonna come back to what it once was. And so it's very scary, but something we've gotta be very conscious, I think, with when we're looking at our economic development opportunities and our future growth of the city. Maybe it's not coming back this time, and there's a lot of people that were kind of reminding me that, you know, we always just assume as Albertans that we're gonna get another boom, it's just gonna happen, it's always around the corner. And it was sad, who just, you know, I went there really optimistic, and I learned a lot of good things about it, but the, the general mood of the conference was a little bit disheartening for me that way, and, but I appreciated the honesty of the people that I got to talk to from around the province in those positions, so it was a good conference. And I wanna thank councillor Bressi for bringing up Joint Rec, I had forgot about that when I was doing my, my earlier things, so thanks councillor Bressi.
Thank you very much for that report, and councillor Blackburn? Okay, and we'll start, I'll continue with councillor Thiessen.
Thank you very much Deputy Mayor O'Toole. Yeah, very busy, very busy month and a half here, I'm gonna highlight a few things, but some that are more recently. I did attend a couple of the Canadian Citizenship ceremonies, I saw councillor Friesen in action, all smiles and making friends, so I took that, I mean, I don't have trouble making friends, but I took a little bit of a, a lesson learning there, just through observation, so I could achieve my own duties to give greetings for the city and thank everybody for wanting to become a Canadian citizen, and yeah, none of you have ever been there, I know councillor Kevin O'Toole's been there, I've seen councillor Minhaz there, but if you've never been to a citizenship ceremony, highly recommend it, and to be a participant in it. The next day on Friday that I went after councillor Friesen did it, I hugged 79 people and their family members, so probably a good 200 hugs I went home with that day in my pocket, so that was really nice. I also took part on the same day with councillor Platt at the Canadian Home Builders Association Golf Tournament Dunk Tank as a participant. Councillor Platt was also a participant, I heard I got dunked one more time than him, but it's probably because I was calling everybody dressed in red Trudeau, which usually got me dunked. Then from there, I went to the International Making Cities Livable Conference in Portland, Oregon, from June 17th to the 21st, which is, I would highly recommend it to everybody to check it out, next year it's in Carmel, Indiana, which is a city about our size, not as big as Portland, but really eye-opening, especially to see a large city center, I know we could see Edmonton and Calgary quite a bit here, but the level of homelessness that's being experienced in the United States of America is something that I've never seen in my life, not in the streets of Toronto, not on the streets of Vancouver, Edmonton, or Calgary. We're talking about everybody's affected from every demographic, we have immigrants, we have families. I saw a baby sleeping in a bike carrier with a mom sleeping underneath it with a big extra, extra-large winter coat hanging over, and on the, on the bike carrier it said "Baby Sleeping," and I was curious, because I was like, oh, they're probably just protecting their stuff, and I poked my head in, and sure enough, there was a baby sleeping in there on the streets. We're talking like half of an apartment building strewn out across the street and stuff like that, and really no services for people to get to. We could blame it on addictions, we can blame it on mental health, but a lot of these people were just victims of circumstance, and so that was a, a bit of a black mark on all the excellent learnings that I brought in. I got five pages of notes, so I'm not gonna bore you with the details, but I'll go over them later, and then I'll email them to you all about all the stuff that I took in, on how to design a, a healthy, vibrant, walkable, livable community that people wanna be in, and examples from all over the world. So I encourage everyone to look into it for next year, Carmel, Indiana. I know I hung out with a lot of councillors from Red Deer, as well as councillors from all across Canada, as well as there is over 50 Canadian participants of all the 200 registrants, so we made up about a quarter of, of the attendees. I also attended Indigenous Fest, I gave greetings after the mayor left, he'd also given brief greetings, and I was able to judge the Cookum and Mushum contests, which was pretty good, I was there for about five hours that day, and the rain held out and didn't rain on anybody's Indigenous parade there, so it was really, really great to see a part of that. When I returned from Portland, I actually landed in Edmonton to take part in the John Howard Society of Alberta AGM, in which I was elected the vice president of the John Howard Society of Alberta, which pretty much moves me up in the step procession to be the president, and then later the, the national representative solely for John Howard Alberta, at the John Howard of Canada, so I was really happy and honored to be given that prestigious dignity. Also, I'd like to just point out, on June 7th Municipal Government Day, I helped out all evening in the kids area with the Dave Bar people, drawing portraits on easels for kids to color. It's pretty hard to be put there on the spot and say, hey, you're doodlist, you draw stuff, so I think I drew about 15, and then helped, helped get kids up in there and coloring all the pictures that I had drawn before, but it was really good. I just wanna speak to all of our staff who participated in Municipal Government Day, it seemed like it was a smooth and seamless, like setup and teardown. I wasn't there for the setup, but I saw how quickly the teardown went, and it was pretty incredible. There were smiles everywhere, and everyone was happy to see people, and of course, as always, we had a great turnout from the community, so thanks to all of our staff and volunteers for that. Finally, I just wanna pat myself on the back, because I took part in the Canada Day Parade, and this is my sixth one as a member of council, and in all of them, including the ones where I rode my bike, I could never keep up to our deputy mayor Kevin O'Toole, who's usually like pacing the float, even when the float is going 30 kilometers an hour, I don't know how that guy moves so fast, but this year I actually held pace, and I, I finished the race of the parade with councillor Bressi and councillor O'Toole as a group, rather than being about 10 floats behind is where I usually finish, so I was really happy about that, and again, great organization, and I would just wanna thank the parade marshal for actually holding a pace that I could keep up with this year, and make me feel good about keeping up with Kevin O'Toole, thanks.
Thank you very much for that wonderful report. Yeah, well, mine is quite long, but I'm not gonna make it that long, I just want to let you know that I missed one of my council member reports, is the Combat sports commission. We did have an event here earlier this year, or earlier this last month, and with that, we also held a clinic for our officials to be a little bit more knowledgeable on the changes that have happened in the last few years, and build a confidence level in our officials, corner inspectors, which we have a number of them, and they provide an excellent service later the next day, so that was great. And I just wanna touch on, I did go to the FCM conference, it was a wonderful time, we actually allowed myself to have some holiday time at that same point, but sleeping in a hotel that is 260 years old was remarkable, and like I mentioned earlier to the fellow with CAP, my goal every morning was to go and meet with the different tables and try and not cause any controversy, but just wanted to know what their concerns were. And that, I found, I got lots of great, I got a lot of business cards from people that wanted to keep the that wanted to keep the conversation going, and like I said, it was a very eye-opening experience that way. And the last one I want to talk about is Municipal Government Day once again. This is a project that's been stemmed by the staff, and it's more successful and more successful every year. And thank you to all the staff, and I'm sure you're going to let everybody know, sir. And I did participate in the Canada Day celebrations, and I was fast that day, but I'm slow today. And with that, I will call the meeting over. Thank you very much.